Good evening. In honor of the Tuskegee Valley community and the tragedy that took place Tuesday, please let's have a moment of silence. Good evening again, and welcome to the Marlington Local School District Board of Education Meeting of Thursday, November 16th, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Josh Hagan?
Here.
Karen Humphreys?
Here.
Kathy Krupko?
Here.
Mark Ryan?
Here.
Jonathan Swift?
Here.
Reading of the mission statement. "In collaboration with staff, community, parents, and students, the Marlington Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with effective intervention to challenge every student." Are there any additions or corrections to the meeting agenda?
I have none.
No, okay. Adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the following agenda for November 16th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphreys?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Special presentation.
Okay, good evening. This is the time we get to honor our October Students of the Month, so I'm going to invite Mr. Farrell from the high school to start us off here.
I apologize, I lost my voice over the past couple days, so I apologize to everyone in attendance, especially the students and parents that I'm going to be recognizing here tonight. Our first Elks Team of the Month is not with us at this moment, but I'm still going to read through their profile because I feel that is right. Our first Elks Team of the Month is Janelle Swisher. Janelle is the daughter of Dave and Amy Swisher. She is the senior class treasurer, a member of the National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, Student Council, Character Counts Club, and Rotary Interact Club. Janelle is a captain and four-year letter winner on the varsity volleyball team and leader of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. In her free time, she enjoys volunteering in the community, delivering meals on wheels, participating in Red Cross blood drives, little acts of kindness, and cleaning up at the Mabel Hartzell Museum and Fire Station. Janelle's hobbies include volleyball, baking, and spending time with friends. After graduation, she plans to attend Malone University, continuing her volleyball career while pursuing a degree in business. Janelle's teachers say that she is a pleasure to have in class. She is an amazing student athlete and role model here at Marlington High School. She is a leader both in and out of the classroom, and her work ethic in the classroom is second to none. In the classroom, she is highly organized and always has her assignments done completely, neatly, and on time. Janelle is an exceptional role model for her peers. She has a warm personality and puts a smile on the face of everyone she comes into contact with throughout the day. So how about a round of applause for Janelle Swisher? Our other Elks Student of the Month is with us tonight, Bo Bratton. Would you come forward, please? Bo is the son of Tierney Bratton and Tom Bratton. He is a member of the National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, and Character Counts Club. Bo is a volunteer at the Alliance Food Pantry, Meals on Wheels, Exceptional Olympics, and the Marlington Youth Football and Basketball Camps. He is a member of the varsity football and basketball teams. Bo's hobbies include playing basketball and football and spending time with friends and family. After graduation, Bo plans to continue his education at the University of Akron and NEOMED to pursue a career as an orthopedic surgeon. Bo's teachers say he's a wonderful young man and a terrific student. He is dedicated to his studies, as evidenced by his grades, as well as his challenging course load. He embraces challenges and works hard to better himself and his peers. He can often be seen working to help his classmates. Bo has a positive attitude and is always looking to be a positive influence on those around him. He is a model student and is very deserving of this honor. And I will also add that yesterday, we did our winter series of mental health talks with our sports teams, and Bo was a leader on that basketball team, speaking up and trying to lead those underclassmen as we try to talk about mental health and being a better teammate, so I congratulate him for that. Bo, congratulations on being an Elks Team of the Month.
First up, we'd like to recognize our Student of the Month, Brody Findling. Brody is the son of Megan Findling. Brody likes to play basketball in his spare time. Here's what his teachers have to say about him. Brody is full of joy and enthusiasm. His positive attitude is contagious. He's a kind and hard-working young man who goes out of his way to make peers feel included. Brody also takes part in gamers club and has taken on the responsibility of having done our video morning announcements. He helps his classmates and his teachers. He's always willing to try something new and volunteers often. Brody is a friend to everyone. He's a very hard worker, and you can always count on him to bring a smile to class every day. Brody is a leader in the classroom, working well with others, and always working hard individually to make sure he understands concepts. Brody will always give 110%, no matter what he's doing, and he'll give you a smile if he sees you in the hall. Congratulations, Brody. It's a well-deserved honor. Lily is the daughter of Kimberly and Compton Gerthery. She has two brothers, Joel and Noah. This is what her teachers have to say about her. Lily has such a pleasant demeanor. She strives to do her personal best for every project. She asks questions so that she's able to make improvements on her work. In her attitude, effort, and classwork, Lily just keeps getting better and better. We can rely on her to be a positive role model and to help others if needed. Lily's an extremely hard worker. She's kind to her classmates and spreads her positive attitude to others. The Middle School has one more Student of the Month that we'd like to announce as well. Izzy Cohen was our Student of the Month from last month. Could not make it, and we'd like to talk about her now, so Izzy Cohen. Isabella is the daughter of Chelsea Wagner. In her spare time, Izzy likes to play basketball, as you can see. Her grandpa Shell is a big positive influence on her that she would like to recognize. This is what her teachers have to say about her. Isabella is always working hard to keep good grades and is always so pleasant and nice to everyone. Izzy's an extremely hard worker who's always on task and volunteers in class. She isn't afraid to ask questions when she doesn't understand a concept and makes sure it's certain in her best work. Izzy demonstrates outstanding leadership at MMS. She's always working hard, participating in class, and sharing kindness to those around her. We're very proud of Izzy Cohen. And now we're on to Mrs. Weber in Lexington Elementary.
Good evening. I would like to recognize Ms. Avlin Diamond, daughter of Tracy Morrow and Cedric Diamond. Come on up, Avlin. Avlin is our Kiwanis 5th Grade Student of the Month from Lexington this month. Her teachers have to say that she is a conscientious student who is always prepared for class. She is a hard worker who participates and helps others to do their best as well. Avlin is also a very kind and respectful kid to her peers and teachers alike. They are proud of her positive attitude and that she is a role model for others, and they would encourage her to keep up the great work. A few other things about her. Her favorite subject in school is math. Her family includes her mom, Tracy, and her two older sisters, Nigeia and her sister Ray Shine, and then her two pets, a dog named Cub and a cat named Mingming. In the future, she would like to visit the Eiffel Tower in Paris, France, and she also is considering a profession as a basketball player. She'd like to be a professional basketball player. One more thing about her is that she loves basketball, and she plays for the 5th Grade Lady Dukes. We are very proud of you, Avlin. Next up, Mrs. Mort, Marlboro Elementary.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Marlboro Elementary's November Kiwanis Student of the Month, Temperance Eb. Tempe, come on up. Okay, a little bit about Tempe from her teachers. Tempe was selected as our Kiwanis Student of the Month because of her continuous and unwavering work effort. Tempe is a delightful student who arrives cheerful and prepared for class each day. She sets an example by keeping a positive attitude and a light sense of humor. The 5th Grade teachers can always count on Tempe for her unique perspective and innovative ideas. We would describe her as kind, friendly, helpful, smart, and a fabulous young lady. A little bit more about Tempe. In school, her favorite subject is math. Tempe has always liked math. She's really good at it, and she loves the challenges of the more difficult problems. Some special things about Tempe's family. Tempe lives with her mom and dad, Laura and Brian, and her younger sister, Lorelei, and their orange cat named Arthur Weasley. Tempe describes her family as funny, creative, and musically talented. They are all in the church choir, and mom and dad are the directors. They enjoy boating as a family at Goodyear Lake, where dad captains the boat, and they also like to be outdoors together. They walk in the woods, they go swimming, fishing, and chopping wood. Tempe and her family also enjoy playing ping pong and watching movies together. Their favorites are Harry Potter, Star Wars, and Star Trek. Tempe's future plans. There's a few things that she's interested in for her future. One is to become a rocket scientist because she likes math and she thinks space is fascinating. Another thought is for her to be an architect because she loves creating and designing. Lastly, Tempe would also like to play in the WNBA, and she wants to do all that and live in Hawaii, where it's sunny and warm. In Tempe's free time, she likes to draw pictures of people, and after she draws their picture, she enjoys giving them the picture to keep. Tempe is musically talented and plays the flute, piano, recorder, ukulele, and will be learning the guitar soon. Lastly, Tempe says she is a force to be reckoned with on the kickball field with serious kickball skills. Congratulations, Tempe Eb, Marlboro's Kiwanis Student of the Month for November. Next up, Mr. Spondiel for Washington Elementary.
Good evening. I am pleased to introduce our Kiwanis Student of the Month, Natalie Depold. All right. Natalie is the daughter of Maria and Dax Depold. She's a 5th grader at Washington. Her teachers wrote about her that Natalie is a great student and a good example of how students should behave in the classroom. Natalie loves to read inside and outside of the classroom at all times. She comes to school every day with a great attitude and ready to learn. She is a kind and compassionate student that is a great friend to all others. She always does what is expected and is willing to help in any capacity that she can. She is a wonderful student and an even better person, and we know that she will be successful at anything that she tries. Congratulations, Natalie, and best of luck at whatever you do. Her favorite subject in school is reading. She says her family is very funny, and she enjoys hiking with them. At home, she has three siblings and three pets that she likes spending time with. In the future, Natalie wants to be an artist, and I can attest she is an excellent artist. You should see her drawings, they're very good. Or she'd like to be a fashion designer when she grows up. In her free time, she loves to draw, and she loves to play board games with her family. She also takes piano lessons and has a very special relationship with her golden retriever named Ruby. Congratulations, Natalie.
Okay, I appreciate all our Students of the Month tonight. This would be the time where if you want to excuse yourselves before the formal part of the meeting starts, this would be the time that you can, where you can stay and stick
Okay, at this time, we'd like to have the invocation, Pastor Gary Bush.
Let us pray. Oh Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight. Lord, we think of the families in the community in Tuskegee Valley. Lord, we just lift them up to you today. The unthinkable events that have transpired this week, Lord, I just pray that you continue to surround those families and those community with your love. Lord, we also pray for the family of Gina White and her husband Rob and their daughter, Lord, going through some trials right now, Lord. I just lift them up to you. They need you. Lord, I thank you for this opportunity. I pray for the board tonight, as they will have many discussions and decisions to make, Lord, for the ongoing running of this school district. Lord, I pray that you would give them wisdom and discernment, and you'd give them wisdom beyond what we could have on our own that can only come from you. Lord, I just pray that you'd be with them the rest of this evening, that they would make good decisions that would be for the betterment of the school, the district, the students, the community, and the faculty. And Lord, we thank you so much for your mercy and your grace, and it's in Jesus' name I pray.
OSB presentation, the board. We went to the OSB conference on Monday and Tuesday of this week, and so if anyone has anything to share about any of the sessions that they attended, we can start over here with Mark if you want to.
Yeah, I attended, I only got to one of the meetings. It had to do with... Oh, I can't... Go ahead, come back.
You just said one, and you're drawing a blank.
What's that?
I said you just had one and you can't remember?
Yeah.
A lot has happened since.
No, come back to me.
Yeah.
I wasn't prepared.
I attended sessions on school safety, 2023 case law update, updated levy campaign guidance, putting community first and planning your future, and managing staffing in a district with declining enrollment. If anybody wants any details, feel free to reach out to me. I'm not going to go into specifics.
I attended a couple of sessions. One was with the OHSAA Executive Director, Doug Ute, and he talked about legislation and how it is affecting athletics in all the different school districts and different referendums. Both his discussion, as well as another one that I attended, discussed House Bill 33 and the fact that it's officially in effect, and we need to make sure we're already in compliance, I know. But the other session went through a lot of legislative changes that the school districts are facing.
One of the three that I attended was regarding behavior coach and dealing with trauma, and just so happened to be presented by Mrs. Krupko's daughter, Allison. Is that how you say it? And it was very informative regarding how that, her help with the student body is able to bridge some gaps, and with individual students, they've performed better, going from, you know, very limited ability to deal with their surroundings even in the schools to excelling in being in classes, and it was...
I follow up. I got a couple, you know, I went to sessions that dealt with a little bit about social media and how social media affects your district, at the same time, how social media affects your recruiting process. When you're talking about, you know, obviously, when somebody my age applied for a job, there wasn't social media at that time, and the fact that the people that are graduating from colleges now, really, when they're searching for jobs specifically in the field of education, really aren't using Google or anything like that, they're using other platforms. So how aware are we of that, you know, when you're trying to recruit and retain, you know, good candidates? I went to another session, which was basically the autopsy of a decision. So when the superintendent makes a decision, in collaboration with the board or in collaboration with law enforcement or whatever, how does that decision affect you in the short term and the long term and the gain? You know, what are the effects of those things? So they had different examples. It was a panel discussion, which was nice. Went to another one that dealt with strategic planning. You know, this is a year we're falling into a strategic plan and did that. I felt the conference this year was, it gave a nice variety. I appreciate that the board members that went down, which was, and kind of chose different sessions. I don't think any of us chose one session where we were together. Josh had different sessions he went to as much as Karen and Kathy and Mark. So we did have discussions, you know, about those sessions. So it's kind of nice to get a different perspective on that, and then obviously, you know, obviously most of the superintendents and boards are down there, so we obviously have those discussions amongst ourselves also, which is nice. So you kind of get a different perspective of what's going on. Let me follow up on that, please let me know on that.
Okay, I'm ready. Sorry. The one I did attend was, had to do with the school funding process, and I was not aware of what's currently going on at the state. There's a six-year process of revamping how school funding is going to occur in the future, and they're in the last two years of this six-year process. And they touched on millage floors, they touched on the state guarantees, which we're part of, and we have a guarantee. They touched on, they didn't get into a lot of detail, but they just kind of glossed over what's going on. They only had 45 minutes to present. But one of the things they did mention, which kind of hit close to home, was pipeline. And they touched base on how the pipeline funding affects school districts. They didn't go into a lot of detail, so I waited to the end and went up and asked the guys, you know, what, I told them what we're facing. We're being tagged as a wealthier district because of the Nexus Pipeline, but we're not getting the full funding. So I said, so we're getting dinked as a district on the state level, and they said, they know that, and there's other districts that are in the same situation. And they talked about a coalition, a pipeline coalition that districts are part of, and I think we're, I think we're part of that, right?
We are, and that deals with, I think, the Rotary and the Nexus and both.
Yeah, okay, so...
The Rotary and the Nexus combined in our area.
Yeah, so I guess that's the lobbying group to get them to consider that there's not full funding when they're taking into consideration what kind of state money we get. So it's an ongoing process, but it was fascinating to hear how that's going through the state.
I also attended one on nepotism and hiring, which I thought was interesting because we're a small district and it's kind of hard not to hire friends and family, but it goes beyond just hiring friends and family. It went into the process of hiring and how that can impact things. There was a delegate for the business conference. We heard from the interim state superintendent, the current president, the incoming president for the OSBA, as well as Richard Lewis, who retired and is on a transplant list because of his health, which is why he retired. So it was very good. So it was very good, good meeting.
Mr. Swisher, presentation.
Okay. Dan, you want to turn that on? I'll try something new tonight, I'm just going to stay seated tonight.
Oh, nice.
There's a reason, there's actually some rationale to this. I think the audience would be okay on this one. I thought you had to go get better.
No, he hasn't been in his pocket.
Maybe. Okay. All right, welcome to November. Mr. Swisher, Superintendent Marlington, we're going to go through my update for this month. As usual, I will not change. I do stick with our theme of every minute, every moment, every memory. I just think it's so critical with our kids, even more prevalent today when you're talking about, you know, I sit up there in reasons of celebration in the now, and I don't even have it in there, but you know, we did a moment of silence for the tragedy that happened in Tuskegee Valley. It's just, it's been a rough week in, in general, when you're talking about Stark County or surrounding counties. I mean, not only Tuskegee Valley, you're talking about Carrollton that lost a student on Saturday night in a house fire, that's a senior.
Manchester.
You know, and you're just, you combine those two things, it's just not good.
Manchester, a week ago also lost.
And Manchester did lose a student also. So it's, mental health is more prevalent every day, even though the Tuskegee Valley's not dealing with that, but it does affect the afterfacts in that district is astronomical. And it's going to, how they recover from that is, we don't know, no one does. So it's just, we're very blessed, you know, for the position that we're in. Because it could be, always be worse, that's how I look at it. Okay, this month I'm going to talk about some fall and fine arts, of our fall fine arts and sports, our elementary math and reading title nights. I'm going to talk about our building administrators, US News, World Report recognition, and it is Ohio Public Education Appreciation Week coming up. So on that note, we'll talk about some of our fall sports and fine arts here. This is our cross-country team, okay? Our boys' cross-country team, just so you know, was EBC and district champs. They were state champions, regional champions. Or they were not regional, they were EBC district champs and they were state champions. So that's the podium of them. This is the third year in a row for this to happen. So like I always said, a three-peat's a big deal. I asked Mr. Miller, what's a three-peat? And he said, there's only been two other schools in OHSA history that's three-peated. Okay, and we have Colin Cernansky sitting on top of the podium there, he's holding it. He was our EBC Runner of the Year in all Ohio, and we had Michael Nichols, all Ohio. So it comes, you know, and the team in itself, you know, you just really can't put in perspective. There was three teams in Stark County that got state championships. No other county had three championships. So there'd be times, our boys, we had Minerva Girls, and we had Jackson Boys. I mean, it's pretty amazing that in one county you have three state champions in one weekend. So just extremely impressive. We're very proud. We will be honoring these, these guys here soon, but I want to talk about that because I can. Our girls volleyball, okay, I mean, another, another history-making season. It's never happened in Marlington history ever. I mean, they were EBC district and regional champs, and they went to the final four in the state of Ohio. First ever regional championship for us in volleyball in school history. You know, we had Lainey Graffas, she was EBC and Stark County Player of the Year and second team all Ohio. And then we had our coach, Steph Tortola, she was Stark County Coach of the Year. And I think she has a few other coaching awards coming to her, but I don't want to say it out loud before it gets released, but I think she's got some other awards coming here down the, down the road. But I mean, it's just, if you haven't followed our girls volleyball, we were the only public school in the final four. You know, that's pretty amazing because typically in volleyball, your private schools dominate that arena. The all-girls schools, or the private schools are all girls and boys. So it's been, and actually the team they lost to won the state championship. You know, on that. It was a great turnout. We have our boys soccer, all right? They were EBC champs, this is their, I got the ninth year in a row, I thought it was the eighth. So it's either eighth or ninth, don't quote me, their eighth or ninth year in a row. Coach Calgo got Coach of the Year this year again. And then we also had David Hoback as our EBC Player of the Year. Not going to mention, I don't have a picture of Zoe Mort. Zoe Mort was the EBC Player of the Year also. So I think out of the nine sports, either four or five of the nine sports, we had the Player of the Year with that, that coming out of Marlington. A very good, another impressive year for us on that aspect in athletics. Okay, our Marlington High School band, they did make it to state this year. So on, on the one side there, I have the, I have the band, I, they're band parents, but they're supporters, but it takes, I think it takes a whole village to do what they do. They went to state Medina, they got an excellent rating. Then I think the only rating they were off by a point would have been a superior. So they did an excellent job. It's just I have a picture of the band out there in the field for us. And then obviously I have the group of parents, Marlington parents, that just are behind the scenes. I mean, they do a lot of movement with the props and this, I think as a recognition goes both ways. When you're talking about that. So it was, it was a good fall season for our, for our Marlington band, you know? So I wanted to recognize that. As always in November, we have our title nights. They happen once a year. They're for families and students, and they're for the community. Basically, we do math and reading activities. The principals use this also to explain the title process to families. And each building kind of selects a theme, okay? So you know Lexington will have a theme, Marlboro will have a theme, and Washington will have a theme. So this is some pictures from Lexington's title night, the other night. And we have Marlboro, some pictures from Marlboro title night. And then Washington's title night. I'm sure Mr. Spondiel did not pose for that, but that's fine. Next up also in October was School Principal Appreciation Month. Okay, just, I'm, I'm pretty sure that the board's aware, make sure the community's aware. So obviously we have, we have principals in each of our different sections by, you know, that. So at the high school level, we have three administrators. We have Mr. Miller, Mr. Farrell, Mr. Travis. Mr. Travis is our assistant, Mr. Farrell's obviously our, you know, leading the high school. And then we have Mr. Miller as our, you know, athletic director, who's also administrator and works with some of our career tech programs. So we kind of had a spotlight on them. That kind of went out on social media and had a little conversation, you know, with our staffs with that. At our middle school level, we have Mr. Rizaletti. She just does a wonderful job. This will be his year two. And then our elementaries, as you guys see up there, we have Mrs. Weber, Mrs. Mort, and Mr. Spondiel. We do have obviously seven very solid administrators on our team. And you know, we really can't say enough because it's hard to recognize the essential role that they play in making their school great. Because each of our townships are very unique and they each have their own element to them. And so each one of these principals kind of got to navigate that on top of that, making sure that, you know, we're pursuing and fostering the right environment for our kids based on where we're at. We really, I want to thank them, because that was October was Principal Appreciation Month, even though we're in a November here. So I got, I get an email this morning. So US News and World Report kind of released their, you know, top schools report for state or by the nation. So I can tell you that, you know, it's the first email I got that we have, you know, we had an elementary school and a middle school at Marlington that fell into the US News and World Report as one of the best elementaries or middle schools. We did have Washington Elementary and Marlington Middle School that fell into that for public schools for 2024, which basically just means that, you know, in general, without, there's a lot of details that go into it. You can Google it and go into it, but it was, you know, basically they're above in the top 40% where they want to be. So it's, you know, our high schools have fallen on this multiple times, but it was nice to get an email saying, you know, you had an elementary and a middle school involved in that. I do want to congratulate them, that, that actually came out here this morning, got an email on that. Then obviously November 13th through the 17th is put out, it's, it's Ohio Public Education Appreciation Week. So we do love our public schools, you know? So we are, you know, trying to find, you know, with the principals where it's, it's kind of odd because I, I talked to Mrs. Krupko today about this and I said, I feel like this is 100% accurate, but I also feel like there's, no matter what week or day it is, we are celebrating something. And I mean, so it's, it's always good. But we do love our public schools, that's why we do it, we're very passionate about that. We do just try to find a way to keep that celebration, make sure our teachers are aware how much we appreciate what they do on a consistent basis. Okay, moving on to where we're at in the now. I told you I keep to a couple of things here, so where we're at right now. So tonight, here in a little bit, or within a few minutes here, we're going to talk about the five-year forecast. So we have already had a work session about that. We spent a great deal of time going through that work session, but we are going to bring Ryan back on, kind of just review if there's any changes from that last work session on the forecast and allow the board to final any questions before we vote on it. Because obviously in November and May, it's critical. We have to submit to the state our five-year forecast. I'm very pleased we're where our five-year forecast is currently, but I'm, you know, I'm not the expert. That's, you know, that's where the finance guy comes in and kind of says that. So I will kind of let that guide us, so I'm not going to get into that because Ryan is here, you know, briefly in a few minutes. Obviously I said, you know, I, I've talked about this. You know, I said in the work session, we were going to talk about discussion about a levy. All right, which we did. We, we spent almost two hours in a work session. So tonight I'll be asking for the first resolution to go to the auditor to find out what the cost would be for a taxpayer in Marlington. And they always base it at $100,000, what it would be. And I, and I'm recommending to the board, if they vote for it, to be a permanent improvement levy. You know, so I, I'm just going to take just a couple of minutes here and explain that there's just a couple of different options from a superintendent to make a recommendation. You can ask for operating money, you can ask for permanent improvement money. Operating money is your general operations. That's basically where 80% of our stuff gets paid out of. That's, that's our salaries for the bulk of it, your benefits. If that's the best, you know, the simplest way to put it. Obviously, operating money has more in it, but that's, you know, if you really want to boil it down to what people want to know what operating money goes to, it goes to pay your employees. I mean, there's more, but that's the bulk of it. What's permanent improvement money for? Permanent improvement money is for your buildings. Okay, and I've been here 19 years, going on 20. I've followed us from every levy passage, which is just renewals, to every levy failure, which is anything we've asked for, new. Community has spoken loud and clear based on their message that they want these five buildings, which is what we've done, this board has done for the last 18 to 19 months, is basically continue to make sure that we need to stay in that upkeep process and, and stay where we're at maintenance-wise, which we've talked about in two work sessions. At the same time, I've had community meetings, six in churches. Been to probably nine township meetings and spoke in various occasions and have had many individual or small conversations with community members in our district. And then you have the ones that don't want to speak to you, they just want to voice it in different ways. But at the end of the day, you know, the, the big questions that we've kind of put away was, you know, obviously we're going to maintain our five buildings. We're obviously not adding one elementary, we're obviously not grade leveling. We spent time analyzing our staff and our purchase services and making cuts and attrition, but when it boils down to it, are we, we have not had new money in 20 years? And we have not asked for anything to keep the upkeep of this building in 24 years? And, and the community says you need to be good stewards of your money and not overspend. I will agree to that 100%. If you want me to be a good steward of my money, and you, and I'm not asking you for more, to operate, which is pay salaries and operate, then leave my operating money alone. Right now, the, the board is taking operating money away from the district to pay for buildings. So why would I ask the community for operating money when I don't need it? The community has made it very clear, live within your means, that's fine. Then leave my operating money alone. And that's where I stand. I'm being very clear on this because this is the message I'm going to send out to every community meeting I go to and every person I speak to. Because I'm doing exactly what you asked for as a community. I'm making a recommendation that's best for the community, meaning that, you know what? I will live within my means, let me operate within the money that I'm supposed to have. But also in the same breath, I know, we have to maintain these buildings. You have not asked for money from this community in 24 years, since 1999. And in 1999, you only asked for two mills, which is greatly appreciated. So how can I stay within that? Because the community has also said to me, Dan, you can't go big. Big never works, you understand it with inflation, we're all feeling it, you can't do it. So we've spent a lot of time making sure we made the appropriate purchase services, to make the appropriate cuts we made with staff based on retirements. So we're looking at, and honestly, I'm submitting hopefully the resolution tonight that the board okay's to only ask for about 2.9 mills, which is basically equivalent to about 1.3, 1.4 million dollars. Probably 1.4, maybe a little over. Because I won't get the exact amount until the auditor gives that, but I can give you a rough estimate. So what does that mean for a taxpayer, the bottom line? A mill in our district for, for a $100,000 home is about $35 a year. For $100,000. And that's a rough guess. You know, it's not, this is from John Oats and Alan Harrell, they're saying, you know, this is why you submit the resolution. So if I'm asking for 2.9, recommending to the board or asking the board to approve a 2.9-mill levy to the community, a $100,000 home would cost you about $101 is what they told me. So you, or if you really wanted to be basic, let's say 100, $100 for $100,000, 200 for $200,000, 300 for $300,000. I mean, you can do the math from there. I'm not sitting here telling you what the average home is in Marlington. I can Google it, you can Google it, it'll tell you what the median home value is in Marlington. I'm not telling you it's accurate or not, numbers are numbers. 2.9 mills, what it'll be, this is again, based on what John Oats and Alan Harrell have said, this is a guesstimate. Gross, it would bring in $1.5 million. Net, it will bring in about $1.4 million. And in layman's terms, because we have Nexus in there and it seems like it's, Nexus is like the equivalent of like a giant home that sits on all our land. How that evaluation works is it will take the money, even though we gross so much, it will, it takes down the actual millage we get, money-wise. You have to know that. So it's very, you know, you don't, you don't want to ask for something and then you say it's gross, you're getting 1.5 when actually you're getting less. Right now, you can find the numbers however you want. We currently only get about $1.3 to $1.4 million from Nexus right now, which is what we're using to maintain our buildings. And it's, we're able to do this responsibly. So why would I ask the taxpayers for anything more than what we currently are good at? You know? You know, if that's the case, if you leave my operating money alone, it's not enough to say, I'm not looking to add, I'm not recommending to add programs or add staff or anything else. This is just to continue the operating the way we are within, within the confines of what we have available to us. And if our enrollment grows, then we make adjustments. If our enrollment decreases, we make adjustments. I've been a man of my word since I've stepped on, I've kind of kept that very clear. Not everybody likes what I have to say. Not everybody likes what I have to say and not everybody agrees with the numbers I give or the things I say, but they're accurate. So, that's going to be the recommendation. You got any questions for Ryan about that? Present both scenarios of what that looks like for the forecast. Both of those were given to the board at the work session. Josh and I had a conversation, you know, it's, you know, the last thing a superintendent ever wants to say is, you know, if we, if the taxpayers are willing to give you this amount of money that you haven't had in 25 years, which is not a big amount, but any amount is, you should be happy about and work that way. How long can you guarantee it? And I don't think you can guarantee anything. But I want to tell you right now, I, I, if you can deal with, you had 24 years on your last PI for two mills and 24 years later, you're asking for something at 2.9. I'm going to say you should pretty hold me accountable that we should be able to stretch this for quite a long time. Or I'm not doing my job. So, that's, that's going to be kind of the discussion of where I'm at tonight and that's going to kind of be my, obviously, it's the board's decision, but that's, that's the reason why I'm making the recommendation I'm making. Finally, obviously, I, you know, I, community meetings, I got upcoming, just to be aware. December 5th, 6:00 PM at the Chapel Marlboro. Again, these are all town hall style meetings. And I'll be there. I can talk about the schools all day long, but at the same time, I want to hear from people, so those will be kind of going out more and more. January 9th, I'll be at Alliance Friends Church. January 16th, I'll be at Aldersgate United Methodist Church. Alliance Friends Church is in town on State Street. Next to Dairy Queen. Obviously, I'll still be, no, not actually across from me. It's actually near.
Near what?
I'll send you the address. Also be continuing to hit in the township meetings. I've, I've, I've been to those, a couple of them a few times, but then I will obviously continue following up on that. And I'll keep you updated on anything more. And then obviously, we'll have our newspaper and that coming out here soon. Any questions you have for me on my report for this month?
I would just make a statement. You're saying $101-ish for a $100,000 home. That's valuation, or that's not what you could sell it for. That's valuation, the auditor's valuation. So, that's, those are different numbers. You can usually, you can sell your home for way more than it's valued at.
Correct.
So, that's what people.
You can't go the auditor's website. They'll tell you the value of your home.
Right, right.
All right. It doesn't mean that, and our auditor does a good job, but yes, you, you're, the auditor may have a specific value for your home on the website. And you may go tomorrow and, and you may go tomorrow and put your house up for sale and sell it for significantly more or less. Either way, but I mean, yeah, so you really have to go to the auditor's website and find what your assessed value is. Because you could, it's not the, I don't want to say this.
The market.
Wrong way. It's not the market value. It's not the Zillow value.
Right.
They could match up, but that's not the value of your home. It's what it would be on the auditor's site.
Correct.
Which sometimes that gets a little confusing for some.
It does.
All right, so now we have on, I guess it was part of the presentation, so it kind of falls right into the next section because I didn't want to get into it. It was about the five-year forecast update. So, we're going to go ahead and hand that over to Ryan and let him give us an update on the five-year forecast. Ryan, you there?
Slow connection. A little patchy. Can you hear me okay, Ryan? We're getting some breakup. Just a minute. Any ideas, Ben?
Give me a moment here, Ryan. I'm going to reconnect this.
Looks better.
He's just moving slower. Quick one star there, Ben.
Very bad. Audio and visual. Very bad.
While we're waiting for that, the auditors, it's, what is it, six-year rotation on property valuations? So, every, after, is that what it is, Bob?
Isn't it three?
After six years, all the properties in the county then reassessed?
Reassessment or update.
They do like a third every two years?
More like every three years, they, they adjust it. The six-year one is a more thorough one.
Six-year one's what?
Is more thorough. You know, where they actually.
Gotcha.
Look at the values and not just mathematically prorate it out.
Better now.
So, every three years. Six-year one's the.
Ryan, you better now?
More likely to change.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds good.
All right, I'll go ahead and share my screen. You see my screen okay?
Coming.
Yes, coming.
All right. Well, thanks for having me. Working with your superintendent and treasurer, we're able to complete the five-year forecast. And I'll note a couple of changes that occurred since May, a couple of different projections we have. Feel free anytime to ask me any questions. This forecast right now, we're projecting the district based on some of the top cutting measures that have gone into place. We'll have an operating surplus for this fiscal year of about $183,000. And then start spending more than bring in revenue next year by about 339. And you can see that grows as you get out to 2028. Some of the major changes in here since the May forecast that I'll illustrate. And this dashboard is going to show you the difference between the, this forecast and the May forecast. One of the things, there's still not clarity on when the pipeline is going to be settled. It's at the Supreme Court. They've been having some hearings on that, but talking with the district administration, we made a decision. Rather than in the May forecast, we had that being settled hopefully this year. We pushed it out to 2027 so that if it does continue to take a long amount of time, we're not showing that revenue coming in. If it happens to sell sooner, then obviously, we change the forecast. It does, it has an effect on your revenues, you can see here. So, we lowered it to about, about 2.5 million dollars, 2.6. And then a little bit under 900,000 next year, a little over 900,000 the following year. It doesn't have effect on your cash balance because as you'll see, when we go into expenses, we just lowered those transfers by approximately the same amount. So, it's less revenue in, but less expenses out as you transfer that to your PI company. We've had some major changes across the state of Ohio with property taxes as far as property values increasing at unprecedented levels. You will not see your reappraisal in your county until next year. And so, still a little preliminary to know what those are going to be. But based off what we've seen so far in the counties that went through this year, as well as talking with a couple of other surrounding counties, what they're expecting next year. We do anticipate the district will get to the 20 mill floor next year because of the increase in property values. As a result, we believe it's going to increase your taxes by about a half a million dollars in fiscal year '25 with behalf of the collection for tax year '25. And then in fiscal year '26, you'd get the full benefit of being at the 20 mill floor, which would generate approximately 921,000 more in real estate and 141,000 more. I'm sorry, about a million dollars more in real estate, we take into consideration, or no levy, and 141,000 in state aid. I'm sorry, in the state shared local property taxes. Besides that, not a lot of change in state aid in total because the district is a guaranteed district. You can ignore this 2018 or 2028 call because there was no 2018 last forecast. That's just the total amount there. And then in all other revenue, interest rates have continued to climb since May and are generating a lot of additional revenue for the district in addition to what some of the investment strategy the district has. And so, that's the majority of the reason why you're seeing, we see all the revenue. It's really your interest in town. What we did would start to spike next year and start to come down of as a result of a lower cash balance. So, overall, without taking consideration of the pipeline settlement, the district's revenue is looking better than it was in May, specifically from real estate and interest income standpoint. On the expenditure standpoint, you can see these decreases here because of the pipeline that are being offset by the, the decreases in revenue. Due to some of the reductions in staffing and the, the budget efforts that the district partook this year, you're down about 480,000 in salaries, what we're anticipating in May, as well as 57,000 we've got to. So, definitely contribute to you guys being able to have a balanced budget for this year. We did see some increases in purchase services to, to about 118,000. And then supplies are down about 42,000 from where we're at. So, overall, we take out, once again, the pipeline. The district's expenses are going to be lower this year by a little bit under $400,000 compared to where we were in May. So, overall, still extremely close to our May numbers, but definitely some additional production help to the district. Once again, have that balanced budget. I'll pause there for, for any questions.
What are the, the difference there for '24 and '25? What are, what positions does that account for? How many positions?
Have to defer to the superintendent treasurer. I know when we were going through, they've given us some of what the staffing looked like, and then we also validated that based on your monthly expenses through October and then projecting those out the remaining eight months a year, but I don't have on me the, the exact positions that were reduced. Probably something I have to be a detail here.
Ryan, correct me if that's wrong. So, the, if you go to '24, if you got to '25, you're just continuing the amount that has, has been reduced already. That amount would, would compound itself out. Now, I know that we're talking, we can only project out the following years. So, currently, we have X amount of retirements that the board's already approved, but the, I think the conversation we had, the intent was if we replace them all at a lower cost, that would be the only savings we had thus far because they would be younger teachers versus, say, 30 plus-year teachers, you know, at that point. So, that's my only, I think our conversation is all that we had thus far.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying here is replacing higher-costened teachers with lower-costened teachers.
Okay.
Those items we had in here.
That's wanting to make sure, because that's what I said. I didn't want to confuse anybody. I said anything different that wasn't there. So, as of right now, we're anticipating, let's say, anywhere between seven and nine retirements this year. I think we've already done probably five or more, obviously. So, the, you know, hopefully at the beginning of the year, we're going to post early. So, you know, hiring a new teacher out of college is going to, you know, if we find good candidates out there, that's always, we're also looking for the best candidates. But, you know, the, the intent would be to fire, you hire somebody that, so obviously, the, the salary difference would be significant from a first-year teacher to a tenured teacher at that time.
Just to illustrate the effectiveness of the property value increases and getting towards a 20-mill floor, I'll show you a visual here that shows based on where you're at this year and where you're estimated to be next year based off of increases. So, you can see up through this year, you're barely above, this blue here at 20.563 mills is where you were effective, effective mills for six-grade levies, including inside millage. And then obviously, next year, we have you going to 20-mill floor as we anticipate those values increasing. The range of changes in those values could, could be impacted based on what happened this year. Right now, I think we anticipate around 20% increase in property values for next year. A lot of the districts we see going through reappraisal this year, which would, obviously, their reappraisal is done. We're seeing some upwards of 30 to 35% with the housing market appearing to cool off a little bit. And two years of your reappraisal are to be completed. That's why we decided to for now come in around 20% until we get more information from the county auditor. We'll try to complete that process.
But that could potentially be 30 to 35%?
Some of the counties we're seeing this year are going as high as that. But that's looking at three previous years. So, with, it, it, there could be a large range of where it could be. It's, it's kind of unknown right now. But the thing is, with the market cooling off a little bit, that looking at, because you guys already have two years completed and this still year yet to be complete, is why we felt more comfortable coming in around 20, but it definitely could be higher than that if it happens with the market.
So, the 0.5 million additional in fiscal year '25 and then the 1 million in '26 is based off a 20% increase?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And if you would talk to Alan Harold, he will, some of the other county auditors in this area, they'll, same thing I said in the work session. You know, they've been very, try to be very accurate in their reappraisals over the last six years where down south, maybe not so much. I mean, they're, he's very blatant, Alan would tell you that. So, it's not a, we try to stay in the, you know, basically in the mid-range based on the, you know, where our county auditor would be.
I'm going to share a different window here.
At the same time, Ryan, you could also attest, you know, and Josh could say the same thing here. There's no guarantee six months from now, that 20-mill floor will even be in play for our district based on what the auditors and what the legislators want.
Yeah, that's a good point.
We could lose, we could lose all money.
Several different proposals to change the way in which some of the property tax laws from changing, rather than getting the full benefit of the reappraisal in next year, that you would get basically two-thirds of that. And then the following four years, you get an additional third as that law expires. That's House 187. That's still pending in the legislature. We haven't heard much about that moving. There was some conversation, proposals from the county auditor association about having a variable floor that was capped at a prior, a prior inflation rate based on, I'm sorry about, based on the rate of inflation. None of those have been, you know, have, the county auditor one was not actually proposed in the legislator's. 187 has not moved forward yet. The concern is if, if 187 is moved forward, a lot of the county auditors do not believe, especially those go through appraisal this year, so it may not affect you as much. They'd be able to get their tax bill that time, which could affect the collection. So, we're still waiting on that, but it's been more than a couple of weeks now. We've not seen any movement of that in the legislature after it's initially introduced. So, more to come. It doesn't mean next year, there's not going to be any additional, you know, new proposal to, to reduce some of the effects of the historic inflation in how, how the market works.
And I appreciate that. And I only say this to the board because I, obviously, with my tenure here, I, I sat there in the chair in the back, you know, as a, as a people services or principal and listened to the board. You know, because they were told they were supposed to get two-plus million dollars a year for 20 or 30 years with Nexus money. And this is why we chose to do it. We did. And, and at the end of the day, you know, none of that's come to fruition. So, you know, we're real good at stating what should happen. At the same time, we know how legislators work. We got a lot of people behind the scenes down there at the state that fill us in consistently, monthly. And I'm going to tell you something is going to happen with that 20-mill floor. All right. I mean, they couldn't have been more factual about it from the auditor's standpoint or the legislators. When that'll be, I don't know, but we're not going to see anything from it for another year. A year is a long time. So, that's why, you know, we're just, I approach. So that's why, you know, we're just, I approach everything in that approach, you know, I don't, you know, we counted things previously that we should have had, and it's cost us. We need to, you know, we need to stop assuming and take the facts at hand.
Right.
So essentially, if there is no change and it stays the same with the twenty mil floor, we're looking at a unvoted two-mil levy increase by twenty twenty-six, and if it went up, property values went up thirty percent instead of twenty, that would be the equivalent of a three-mil increase, which would cost homeowners possibly more than what we're asking for the levy.
Possibly, but I'm asking for buildings, the operating money would be left alone, which is what I want. We're told to live in our means. We got, the reason why districts around us, you ask why they're living within their means, well, they're all at the twenty mil floor and they've been there and they've got levies through. That would include Osmondburg, Sandy Valley Northwest, Tusslaw, Fairless, Minerva, Jackson, Alliance, Louisville, Perry, Maslin, all of twenty mil floor have been there for years as these increases done it, which is why they live within their means. Then they ask pass any levy that they've passed, which they've passed many, deal with permanent improvement or dealing with their buildings.
Yeah.
You know, whatever happened in the past with us, which would put us back to, you know, when we passed an eight-point-five mil levy twenty years ago, you know, you didn't choose to do it emergency.
Yeah.
Because somebody didn't like the language. You know, and at the end of the day, emergency and PI don't affect the floor. You still got to renew it, but somebody didn't like the word emergency. You know, I mean, it's, you got to be careful, you know, because at the end of the day, you need to be honest with your taxpayers. If it was me twenty-five, twenty years ago, I would ask for emergency money. You need it, you must need it.
But essentially, if we would have asked for operating levy, that would go against the twenty mil floor and keep us from hitting the twenty mil floor, correct?
Absolutely. I would not, and I would ask for emergency operating money if you wanted to leave, if the board's recommendation to me would have been continue to take operating money out to pay for your buildings, because that's essentially what you're doing. The board itself is saying, I want you to take operating money and pay for your buildings. So that's fine, we just need more operating money. You can twist the numbers or flip it however you want, you know, and it's, at the end of the day, we need to maintain our buildings, we can't fiscally do that without taking operating money out. There's, that's a fact, there's no one in the room that can argue it.
Yeah.
So I don't want to be in a position like Lake or anybody else that has to be, hey, we need to be cut, and I don't want to be judged on that. Right now, when I'm asking for a levy, it's not about cuts, it's not about if in March we don't pass what we're going to cut, we don't need to cut anything, because I'm asking to maintain our buildings. It ain't physically prevalent to move forward, it's just, at the end of the day, I like to stay that way. I don't want to be in a position in a year or year and a half to say, hey, we have to really, what I call it, injure the district, as I've used in terms before. I think the twenty mil floor was there for a reason, it's back in nineteen seventy-five. I think we could have been there a long time ago. But that's not for me to judge, I can only deal with what's in front of me right now.
I just wanted to be completely transparent, I mean, we're talking about a two-point, roughly a two-point-nine mil PI levy, and we're saying it's going to generate or cost the average homeowner of a hundred thousand dollar assessed value home a hundred and one dollars a year.
Correct.
I don't want people to go, okay, I'm going to support that, and then look at their tax bill and it's a hundred and seventy-five more, two, upwards of over two hundred dollars more with the additional millage from the twenty mil floor.
And I get that, and this is the only part that I guess I'm not the, that's the one probably thing I'm not the expert on, because I heard previous superintendents sit here and talk about what they call phantom revenue, and I can't speak on that in a frame of mind that would give it to you in a good, good way to put it, but regardless, in the last twenty years, your taxable assessed value of your home has gone up. Everybody in this room's assessed value in their houses has risen. And I've heard many people say in general in terms, well, my taxes just went up for a half, a hundred dollars, if I just give you an example, or thirty dollars, or two hundred dollars paying the size of their home or their property. Obviously, you're getting more money. No, we're not, but they're still paying more taxes, Josh, phantom revenue. So, I mean, it's, you know, it's like you can spend it however you want, but the taxes have gone up.
I'm not spending it.
I mean, I'm just saying, it's, the taxes have gone up on that. You know, their taxes are going to go up either way, at the same time, we're going to hit the floor, except now we're actually receiving some of the money, and it's not the phantom revenue that's going to go away, whereas the district is going to receive operating money that will help the benefit of the school, so you don't have to ask for that operating money down the road. As, as you know, if Ryan would present a, the scenario of a PI passing, you could see that puts us way out there past twenty-eight, and I've said for the last two years, I only can't look at the first three years because four and five is like throwing a dart, you know, I don't care if it says negative, we've sat, we've had negative revenues, you know, I think Bob put it together in his projection in August in the work session, you know, always in year four and five, but we somehow seem to, as a district, as most, you know, you got to make those cuts and changes as you go based on your enrollment or purchase services or whatever, which is what I will continue to do. I'm not looking to sit up here and say, I want to give this, give the staff raises because that's why I want to make it PI, live within your means. I'm not looking at saying, I want to add programs or anything else. I think there's things we need to do, but we need to get squared away first, and we're not there yet, we're close. But I do agree, yes, what you're stating is the fact. If there, if we hit the twenty mil floor, that, and we do that, they get a hundred and seventy-five bill, that a lot more of that money will be coming in for us. If we weren't at the twenty mil floor and we just asked for operating money, it still doesn't change the taxable is going to go up, we're just not going to get it.
Right.
But I can't say for Josh, like, exactly how to explain it. I'd love to have somebody come in and explain it to me, because I know it goes in depth, but that's, I think, the phantom revenue part.
So the twenty million, mil floor doesn't increase taxes. What you're saying is taxes are increased for other reasons, the twenty mil floor is not what's going to increase tax for anyone.
That's just the inside mileage, and I, and I could be saying that wrong, and I don't want to say that I'm, I'm not the expert, I can get that answer, I don't want to say it and then be quoted wrong and be a hundred percent of that, but I can give you an exact answer for sure by next month and say how that would affect us on that end, unless Ryan could speak on that too, but it's kind of where.
Yeah.
Yeah. What I can show you here is, this is historically, let's say, what's happened with your property values. So as property values have increased in fifteen, eighteen, and twenty-one, you can see what's happened overall with the district's tax rate in those same years, say decreased by nine point five seven, decreased by seven point three three, and decreased by ten point three three. So this is historically how, as values go up, rates go down with, as the superintendent said, except for inside of the legislature term of March. Moving forward, we anticipate increase in property value in twenty-four, you're not going to, you're still going to see a decrease in the overall tax rate, but not nowhere near what you saw historically because you are hitting the twenty mil floor. And then, you know, twenty-seven, you wouldn't see any change in your effective tax rate because you are at the floor. The simple way I think to view that is, this green line up here is your full loaded rate, so this is the rate that the taxpayer voted for when these levies, these others originally voted in. This gray line here going back to thirteen is what's happened to that effective tax rate as values have gone up. And then you see, once we get here to twenty-four, it meets this red line, and that red line is the twenty mil floor, and just can't drop the floor of that. When you put it in terms of the district's revenue, we look through a ten-year lookback and compare it to what inflation looked like just between twenty-one and twenty-three, the district's local property tax has actually declined by three point two-two percent over that ten-year period, so that has to do with the public utility funds. Total revenue increased by point six-five, and inflation's increased by, on average, point one-two percent. Moving forward, even hitting that twenty mil floor, you'd be looking over a five-year period, an increase of three point seven-nine percent in local taxes, and your total tax base increased by two point two-eight percent on average. If you look at what inflation was pre-COVID, pre-hyperinflation, that would have been more of a rate by three point six-six, so you'd be, your local taxes would increase basically in line with inflation if you were to get that type of increase in twenty-twenty-four, and then again in twenty-twenty-seven, having a smaller increase, it would put your local tax base on, on target to be around what inflation would have been looking pre-COVID. I don't know if that helps or not, but it's always an easier way for me to understand it.
Appreciate it, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
Let me go ahead and share whatever other items you guys would like me to show, I can also show you on another scenario that we did look at with, if you didn't have a PI levy and then maintained those public utility funds in the general fund, what that would look like. First of all to show you is here's the overall makeup of a district. You are forty, forty-eight percent state funding, and this does include the local, the state shared local taxes. The part to understand about this is, even though you're almost, you know, half and half with a little bit of other revenue here, you're pretty much frozen on state funding to be, you're guaranteed district, so there's really no increases in the state funding moving forward, you're basically capped. When we look at your expenses, the majority of your expenses are in personnel, with the second most being in purchase services and then drug, everything else like supply, debt, makes you about twelve percent. And then a couple of things, when we're looking at district enrollment, you did have a little bit of a drop this year in estimating that it's going to be relatively more stable moving forward, based on looking at some of your outgoing class sizes and incoming class sizes. So just some informational stuff there. And then finally, putting in perspective of what does the district's overall budget look like, the daily operating costs, looking at the general fund, educating students around seventy-four dollars per student, with the local taxpayer, the resident taxpayer picking up about twenty-six percent of the seventy-four dollars a day, and the state, federal business taxes, nobody else can get revenue support from, picking up about there, seventy, thirty-four percent of that. So if there are other questions with that, I can move on and just show you this other scenario that was formulated today, if the district could not transfer out the public utility funds, maintain them in the general fund with the passage of a PI levy, what would the district's financial support at that point?
Right, I'm sorry, I thought you froze again, my fault.
Sorry. And so I'll share on this screen here, so this is now looking at a PI passing, still transferring out this year for public utility funds and half of it next year, and then basically maintaining the public utility funds in the general fund moving forward with still the expectation that there was a settlement in twenty-seven. Under this scenario, the district would not be an operating surplus balanced budget through twenty-twenty-seven. You may ask, well, how does this amount increase to a million fifty in twenty-seven when we're only deficit or operating surplus a hundred eighty-three thousand in twenty-four? And that's because of the pipe, especially the public utility pipeline settling in twenty-seven and getting a settlement from the pipeline going back for all the years, they basically did reduce rate based on what agreement would have been if it hadn't been challenged this past year. The district would then start deficit spending again in twenty-twenty-eight as opposed to twenty-twenty-five under this scenario. All of these are also assuming that the real levies pass, which you'd have to pass, it looks like five perhaps here, in fact, year twenty-six, or, I'm sorry, twenty-five for collection and twenty-six. Any questions on this scenario I could help answer? All right, any other questions on any other, Andrew, review tonight that I could assist with?
I had one more question, and I talked to Ryan about it too, down in Columbus, I ran into him, he was one of the presenters at one of the sessions I attended, and I had asked him about the solar project, and he didn't really have any information on that at the time. Do we have any estimate on what we potentially could be receiving from that?
No, I've only had one conversation with Samsung and the, I guess it would be the project manager of the project, that would have been, I would have given that update to you guys, I would say, six or eight months ago when they came and spoke, and they really had no, obviously, their intent was, it's still going to the power site committee from there, they needed to have more community meetings, so I think it's, there was a public release as of yesterday, I shared that with you guys tonight, I think at Washington Elementary, there's two dates, I can't tell you exactly what those dates are unless you have it in front of you, it's in the back, for them to talk, and I think they'll have timelines there, but I know they're going to a trustee meeting coming up, but I don't think there's a definitive timeline originally. They were hoping for, and please don't quote me, Josh, I'm thinking twenty-seven.
Yes, that's what they said.
So twenty-seven?
I want to say twenty-seven.
That's what they said.
And I forget, I have to go back in my notes, and I don't bring those, I keep my pad, my personal notes, but I thought it was.
That's if there's no opposition to it.
Right, it's not derailed in any.
It depends on the, it depends on, I think their next phase were these two meetings, and then, and then it would, if it, if all goes well, the power site committee would give it its approval. If it gets through the powers, and I'm hoping I'm saying that right, the power site committee, then it would, typically, they said ninety-plus percent of the time, once it goes to the next phase, it's something that's going to come to fruition for your, you know, general project. I forget what, how big of a megawatt farm it was, I feel, I feel like a hundred fifty.
Hundred fifty, up to a hundred fifty.
Up to a hundred and fifty. I know they had to expand the property to get to a hundred and fifty, so I think that was maybe part of the delay here on this, was because they were looking for more land in Washington Township near where the power grids, the power lines were going, based on the fact that we have those big power lines going through, if you're heading down Beechwood, you'll see where those are at. Obviously, they can hold a lot more, in a nutshell, they can hold a lot more power than what they're carrying, so this is why that's an optimal spot to be able to do a solar farm, or solar project, based on that. But I won't know more until they, they have not scheduled a meeting back with us to give us anything definitive. I did reach out to Jen Lynch, she was the, I think, the project manager, she's waiting to get back to me, but I think her main concern was trying to get the dates locked in at Washington Elementary at the end of November and December, and I don't, no, off the top of my head, I don't want to say the twenty-ninth of November, but I could be wrong.
Correct.
And December, and I shared those with you tonight, so I guess those would be questions for them. Was there any, any indication when they suspect this would be fully operational? They said, originally, they said around twenty-seven, I don't think it was anything too far under the operational protocol piece, and I did ask, and I, Josh, I can give you that answer, I just can't tell you off the top of my head.
Should be able to get some of those answers at that meeting, one of the twenty-nine.
But to answer your, your exact question, I did ask, and I gave it to you that, in that, and I don't remember because it was so long ago, but I do have it, I can find it, basically what a hundred and fifty megawatt would produce, and then basically what the township would get and possibly what the school would receive. If I had to, don't get me wrong, a lot of numbers go through my head.
Is it approved by the commissioners yet?
Yeah, I don't know.
No, that's, that's not forthcoming.
Yeah, it's not even approved.
So, but Josh, to answer your question, I got to believe it's somewhere around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, could be more, obviously, maybe half a million. That's my gas base, now that you're hitting me a little bit off the top of my head about it, but that's, I can honestly tell you tomorrow, I could look it up in my notes and give you the exact what like a hundred and fifty megawatt is for you, I could tell you that.
Okay.
Not a problem.
But correct me if I'm wrong, we anticipated money from NEXUS that we didn't get, so we don't want to make the same mistake again and start.
Oh, no, I wasn't.
School district on anticipated, maybe.
Even with, even with Ryan, I didn't even bring up the solar because I can't, until they come back and say, we're going to go for the build a hundred percent, then I could say, we can anticipate it and build it in. I would a hundred percent agree. If they say, yeah, we're going to build this, it gets past the power site, power site committee, we can do this, I think it's a better judge in what you're going to do. Again, it's operating, now if the board says, no, I want to move it to a different fund, say they want to put in something separate, that's, it's all worth the conversation.
I don't think anybody made any decisions based off of the orig- I don't think anybody made any decisions based off of the original estimated amount we were going to get from NEXUS.
Say that again.
I said, I don't think that the board ever made any decisions based off the full amount that NEXUS had said that they were going to give us.
I can tell you, me sitting over there, I just knew that we were taking all NEXUS money to put in the capital improvement funds. You know, the projected amount was over $2 million. That was what was projected based on the valuation of what the, what the pipeline was supposed to be to bring to the school.
Is Ryan still with us?
Ryan, are you done? Are you still there?
I'm still here.
Oh, can we, we can let you go. Does anybody else have anything for Ryan? I'm sorry.
No.
Sorry.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, guys. I'm very excited.
Appreciate it. That's the only thing I know I can say for sure when that, you know, you can go back in the notes and look. I mean, it was built for capital improvements knowing that, you know, whatever direction the district went specifically with, with the buildings, maintaining them or whatever at that time. I can't speculate on what the superintendent was going to recommend or not, that was going to be able to maintain and do that, which it is. I mean, that's what we're using it for. I mean, we wouldn't be able to do the roof. We wouldn't be able to do the elementary projects we did. We wouldn't have put air in the buildings. All good things. I mean, I'm thankful. It was a good move. I'm not, the move itself was right, but we're at a point now where-
It has to change.
We need to operate one way or another. So I'm just basically saying, if you want me to operate within my parameters, let's do it. If we want to give ownership to the taxpayers, then it needs to go to the PI because they're, now you're talking about buildings.
100%.
If I go operating, somebody can come back and say, well, you could do this with this. And then the board could turn around and say, hey, I want to give blah, 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 or add this and that. And I don't want that even out there as a change, right or wrong, because we're still healing. So I just, to me and my, my personal gut is that, in my very limited conversations with a few community members, when I just asked them, if you would vote for anything, what would it be? And they said, small PI buildings before I would give you an operating money. You're not there. So I gotta take that with a grain of salt, and that's what it is.
So tonight, we're voting on the second phase of four phases for the roof for the high school.
Yes.
After the two following phases, what other major construction projects are we looking at that we would need 1.4 mils towards?
So we, you know, we got to figure, we've probably got another two-plus million after this to finish the roof. We're going to have a couple major between air and the middle school, or not the middle school, the high school gym and auditorium. I have a guess in it, but I don't want to say quote, but I don't think it's nearly what somebody might have said or didn't say. You know, I've talked about that a little bit. Paving's going to be continued, big project on a continuous basis. I mean, we can maintain so much. The high school's going to be continued. Well, I think if you, I'm hoping to have that to you in December, like I promised, you know, kind of a paving projection, you know, in that aspect of it.
And we still, I mean-
We still have abatement issues?
We still have abatement issues that are close to half a million dollars or more. Well, that was the last, the last estimate was half a million, but that was from three years ago. So-
I guess going back and looking at, when I, when I made the decision with Bob to make a recommendation for this, it wasn't based on just the fact that NEXUS brings in this much. This is the way to go. We've been continually giving operating money to buildings, one way or another, even for small projects and concrete and sewer projects and just general maintenance things that we do every day because we're only really bringing in a little over $500,000 a year, you know. And, and there's a lot of different things you can, you tie PI money to. It's not just building. Some of it can be, you know, bussing related, you know, motors related, things like that. So conservatively, or maybe not, I felt that the, anything in the twos was a reasonable ask. And I think, you know, and I don't, back to my point that I said originally, Josh, I don't want to give an answer and say how long it would last, but I hope significantly long. I don't want to be back in, I don't know, how do I put this? I don't want to be back in five years asking for PI money that I did something wrong. You know, and I, and I've told each of you individually at some point in time or as a group, in hindsight, over 20 years, there should have been recommendations for some type of operating money, just like it would for a road levy or a fire levy or anything else. But it didn't happen. Inflation is inflation. But at the same time, I can and will operate within the means if we just let the operating money go. I'll make it work. And I want to know where the, and I got to know where taxpayers stand. I got to know. I don't know how much smaller I could go. I mean, obviously, I guess you go as small as you want. You go to a mil, you know. But this is where I'm going to, this is where I think it would be good for us for a very long future term. And it's in complete control of taxpayers, and the board's going to make all the recommendations moving forward with it. On top of that, Josh, I do think we have some, athletics was a big component, and it is part of our district, don't get me wrong. I think we've done very well with that, but there's, those things are still going to have to be maintained. I think you asked me about the turf. I don't think we're going to be coming out of too much out of PI for replacement of turf in a few years because we've set aside money based on rentals. And, you know, I don't know if you knew that, which I think has been good. Our high school track is not going to be, it was done when Lou Romuno was here. When was Lou Romuno here? I, I mean, I was here, but-
That was '06, '07.
So our track, I know, is coming up. You know, that was PI money. We used district PI money for that. That wasn't a booster fundraiser. It was just, that's what needs to be done. We're going to be doing the tennis courts in the spring, but we got that, I think, on a very good deal. I'm going to have to get exact number because I'm a little, but I've heard good things about that. But I would say paving, the roofing, the roofs are going to be good. All five of our buildings, based on what we've done, are going to be good. I can't speak for the mini splits, what's going to have to be replaced or not or general maintenance on those. And then depending on what our district wants to do moving forward. If you do want to grow a program, it could be part of PI. If you wanted to add a crew tech, if you wanted to add an HVAC, if you wanted to add, I don't know any of those things, but at least it's there. And it will only be for a five-year. So at the end of five years, if you're really looking at it and saying, you know, I don't know if we need to continue to renew a 1, 2.9 mil levy, you need to make it smaller. You can actually adjust that levy where it's beneficial, which I was told, or you can just not renew it at all and not make the recommendation. You know what I mean? So it does have options.
Even if you put it on, it's going to be on for a vote.
But it's only, I want to make sure it's only for a five-year. I don't want any more than a five-year because it's that way. I hope that answers it. But I will give you, typically, right after January, I give you kind of a major project update of what we want to do in the summer, kind of putting that together. The roof's the only one we kind of got to do in November because we got to get that stuff moving.
Do we have to vote on this project?
It's further down the show.
It's further down. Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions from my presentation and tied in with that? Good questions.
Let's go on. Public participation. Did anyone sign up to speak?
No.
No speaking? Okay. No old business, new business?
Before we go into business, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Five minutes?
Two minutes?
Two minutes. Go. We'll take two minutes. Okay, we're back.
All right, moving on. We have no old business tonight, but we do have three items on our new business. First item on our new business is recommend the motion to approve the following natural gas bid resolution as shown in Exhibit A.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
This is just from the Ohio School Consortium, the OSC. Basically, it gives them the opportunity to bid on natural gas for all districts. This is not for you to authorize us taking any type of, if they bid it, then we have to take it. So really, they would just give us numbers, and then we'd have to bring it back to the board for a choice. We do have that confirmed. Just the opportunity for them to bid.
Awesome. Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Okay. The second item tonight is recommend the motion to approve the following roof project resolution as shown in Exhibit B.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Okay, so in the work session, I talked about, we had basically, you know, we talked about doing the roof in three phases. Based on our current capital improvements fund and based on our PI fund, doing it three phases was not going to be fiscally responsible for us. The reason being is the original phase that they gave us for Phase Two, I showed you was roof, basically 14, 15, 11, 10, and 9 on your map. Josh had a good question. You know, he said, well, how much square feet was roof on the Phase One? So Phase One, we spent about $1 million, just a little under, to be honest. It was 26,680 feet. So originally for Phase Two, it was going to be 45,090 feet, which is kind of came into why the cost was where it was at. I asked him to go back and give me a different look, and I didn't know the answer, actually, when they gave me Phase Two. So I had to call Kevin Butler and ask. And so Phase, I call it 2A, which is roofs 15, 14, and 11, which you guys have is 27,750 square feet. So almost identical to Phase One, a little larger, but not by much. And the price is basically almost identical, give or take, about $100,000 within a year. So I felt that was very reasonable and a good question because it kind of struck me. I didn't know that answer. And if they would have came back and said it was 15,000 square feet, we got a little bit of a problem. You know, I mean, it's just your inflation can't be that much. So it's, that's where, that was a good call. So that's, that's the recommendation that I'm, that I'm moving forward with. That's the resolution on there. The cost for Phase Two would be $1,080,900. Obviously, it has a change order to give myself or Bob the chance to go 10% over as any normal construction cost. We did not do any change orders in Phase One.
Great. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Okay, and my last and final item is obviously just the, the resolution. There's, this is just to, so recommend the motion to approve the following levy resolution as shown in Exhibit C. So that, sorry. That's it I recommended. You got it.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, discussion.
This is just for us to send to the county auditor for them to actually give us to the nearest dollar the value of a mil, then not to exceed 2.9.
This is not placing it on the ballot.
Not placing it on the ballot.
Okay, discussion. Anyone questions?
So we need that vote in December to actually place it on the ballot.
Yes, so-
And that's for March.
Typically, we have a May primary. So in this case, that's what I thought originally, actually, when I started this year. And then I was informed by Alan Harrell, and he said, no, in a presidential election year, your primary's March, which kind of changed the timeframe a little bit. Even Josh had a question. Typically, don't we vote the second round in January? That would be correct, but in this case, we cannot. So to, for any levy or anything to appear on the March ballot, it has to be in by December 20th to the Board of Elections.
90 days?
December 20th is what they told me. I don't know what that entailed back. That was the kind of the deadline on that. So that's why, you know, I was-
That must mean around March 20th.
Right. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
No.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Okay, we're on the treasurer's agenda. First item on the treasurer's agenda is to approve the board minutes from October 19th, regular meeting.
Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend that the board approve the financial reports for October as shown in the exhibits.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Questions?
No questions. I'll just touch a couple highlights if you don't mind.
Yes.
Reconciliation was completed for October. Total fund balance is $13,831,502.17. It's not on the report that I gave you, but the investments year-to-date, we've received Right now, the, or at the end of October, the general fund cash balance, $10,197,063.18.
Say that again, please. Thank you.
It's the cash balance. Let's see, one last thing. Number of checks are the, the checks that we issued in October totaled $449,921.37. Are there any questions?
Does not appear to be. Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
I would like to recommend that the board approve the following budget revisions as presented in the exhibit.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
There are two items where I'm increasing the appropriations or asking that they be increased. The first is for $9,200 to add additional budget for the Drama Dukes. They had additional fundraising activity and want to use it. The other item-